Got on the meeting to order any items for the public. If not, just wanted to say that we have a special birthday with us today. And so with that said. Happy birthday Penny. Alvin the Chipmunks. Wife Jackie had a birthday on March the 8th and I turned back around and played Ronnie Millsaps. Happy birthday darling. I didn't realize it was to a past life or spouse or something.
Did he teach us when wrong?
She did. At first she said, turn that noise off. So it was for you. Then I listened to the lyrics. I said, well, it didn't work out too good.
Did she give you?
She's been real nice to me since then.
Little hidden message in there.
All right. Need a motion to approve the agenda. Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? I did have one thing. I brought it to Penny's attention on the trip to Charleston to Mr. Delie. It says car rental and it should say reimbursement for fuel.
Fuel. That's great.
Or Molly's reimbursement.
What kind of car did Dan rent now?
Oh, yeah.
Lamborghini.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I was thinking.
He was close.
It is, isn't it?
It drives about that fast too. It'll roll right down the road.
Any other changes or corrections on the purchase order? Mr. Wine, there is no internal budget revisions? Change in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for James Dunn. As a deputy court marshal with an annual salary of $33,028 effective April the 1st, 2022. A new hire recommendation received from Jen Swisher, 911 Director for Delaney license. As a telecommunicator one with an annual salary of $43,775 effective April 2nd, 2022. Change in status received from Jen Swisher, 911 Director for Carter White. She is no longer certified as a training officer. Her salary were decreased from $50,287 to $49,787. Effective March 11th, 2022. Letter resignation received from the Council Office for Christian Davis effective March 25th, 2022. Any questions on the change in status? Everyone was present for the minutes for February 24th, 2022. Any changes or corrections on those? Moving on to the county council calendars. We'll be here next Thursday on the 24th. And boards and commissions. Boards and commissions will be on Monday, the 21st, 4 p.m. Eastern. Panhandle Transit Authority, they hired a new director.
Deputy director.
A new deputy on the radio is new director. It didn't make sense to me, so.
Yeah. Yeah, she actually got a really good job.
Yeah.
Was it Loudoun County? Yes. Yeah. Got a really good job. Moving up, moving up in the, in the world in transportation.
All right. We have a 4 p.m. Health Board, 5:30 p.m. Main Street, Martinburg, 6 p.m. Airport Authority, 6 p.m. Planning Commission. Wednesday, the 23rd, 1 p.m. CBB, 3 p.m. Senior Services, 4 p.m. Criminal Justice Board. Thursday, the 24th, 5 p.m. Library, 5 p.m. Ambulance Authority. Any change or correction to boards and commissions? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Onto board meeting reports. Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Monday I had a Berkeley County Public Service Water District meeting. It was the shortest public service water district meeting I had ever been at. Of course he went in the executive session and kicked me out, so.
You know, you could probably talk him into keeping you in there.
Well, sometimes.
Sometimes you're better off not.
Yeah. Pay application for the woods to plan upgrades for a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars was approved. They're having some problem with design of utilities on subdivisions of power companies coming in and slamming their power units right on top of various water district improvements and it's going to make it impossible in the future to access water.
Power, power company doesn't do that.
Yeah, they did. They had pictures and everything.
Are you talking about above ground?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly right on top of the water district. I mean, they're using the water lines and slamming transformers right on top of them.
Transformers, so it's underground?
Well, no, above ground. I mean, they had the.
The poles.
Yeah. Not the poles, but.
Transformer pad.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the developers.
Underground electric.
The developers want doing that, not the power company.
No, the power company, you know, they designed it and slammed it.
Oh, yeah.
They told them, you know, they go through, they pound sand, so.
Yeah.
You sound like you're a little worked up about it.
Well, I wasn't, but they were.
Oh, okay.
And then I had an M P O meeting, which was the shortest M P O meeting I ever attended.
I had a conflict, so.
Well, no, you didn't harm yourself by not being there. It was a nothing meeting. You know, no tip. The tips were minor adjustments and, you know, like this. The next meeting may last until seven o'clock at night, but this meeting, there was really nothing addressed and nothing. No, so it was two basically nothing meetings, but I was there.
All right. Mr. Delie.
So, let's see, I had a farmland protection meeting and had learned, learned some interesting things in the meeting with conversation, went into a conversation after the meeting was over about, about farmland protection and and if there's federal money used in farmland protection. The, the thought process was from the, what's Mark's title there?
The Director of Farmland.
Director. The Director had indicated that if a piece of property was in farmland protection, your condemnation of the property is not allowable. Now, his thought process was that if it was just a, it was just done by the state, the Department of Highways could probably overturn that and, and make that happen. Obviously, it'd be a battle, but he said that, that he only knows of one that had federal money in it that was overturned and it was a large parcel of ground. And I think it was part of the corridor eight and it went through just a little corner of it. And so the feds never showed up to the court case when it went to court. And so the judge ended up passing that one, but he said that's the only one that he knows of that, that has been allowed with federal money. And so when I heard that, I thought, wow, you know, this is a whole other thought process because if, and, and it's up to this board to be able to allow those farmlands to be protected. I've never given that consideration before when we approved those of, is this going to be in a path that's going to be used for the Route Nine extension down the road? And is there federal money involved and is that going to kill the, the growth of that road down the road? Or, for example, the airport, you know, if you wanted to, there's, there's plans for the airport to expand at some point and put in another runway. If we approve a piece of farmland protection right beside the airport, we can, and there's federal money involved. We could actually kill the growth of the airport. So, you know, it's, it's, it's another thought process that, you know, when they were talking about that, I thought, wow. Why, why were we not, you know, why did we not know that before this, you know, when we're approving these things? Because to me, that's a vital thing for us to look at. Being the stewards of the county and the growth of the county, looking forward of how we're going to continue to prosper and look out for the expansion. I mean, you know, people all the time talk about the roads not being adequate, that type of thing. We, we had, we definitely have to look at that, so. And then part of that report also, I think they said we have, they're going to come in front of us next week, aren't they? For two, I think next week they come in front of us for two more, for two more parcels of property. And I think that puts them up to seventy-four hundred acres in Berkeley County. It was, it was, it was an interesting meeting. Then I had a, I actually had a conflict with the M P O yesterday. We had a special meeting at the Development Authority to approve, approve some leases. I moved forward with some leases that we were working on, two different leases. And then we had shortly thereafter, we had a Business Development Committee to talk about expansions and properties that we're going to purchase and properties that are getting purchased and, and, you know, and the growth's coming on, so. So that was a good meeting. Most of that was an executive session, but.
All right. Mr. Okenire.
Yes, I had a parks and rec meeting. All the programs are running extremely strong, even more children involved than pre-COVID numbers from two thousand nineteen. All the, most all the programs are just exploding with kids involved. That's really a positive thing. Get kids out, get them active, get them going again.
So what do you, what do you attribute that to? Is it, is how they're marketing and getting the word out or is that?
You know, I tell you, they, they've never really had a whole lot of problem getting kids engaged because through my experiences both as a parent and as a grandparent, most of their programs are extremely well done. And I think other families see the value and success of those programs and they want to push their kids to get involved, so. I, I think maybe the last two years, you know, other than being shut down, that, that maybe some families even held their kids back a little bit. Too recently when we got to kind of get older, it's bubble.
I mean, that's, that's an interesting statistic because aren't we still lower population in the schools than we had pre-COVID?
I think so.
So, I mean, the kids are obviously still there and now they're going to recreation, but they're, but they're, but they're not back in the school system.
Not to go to the school. Well, I think that truthfully, the more children that are either homeschooled or sent to private school, they will be taking more advantage of the parks and rec programs.
Well, I see that, yeah.
One of the things, Eddie, that, that I recognize, we went to a playoff game for girls' basketball, eight, nine year olds. I've never seen some of the parents act so bad in my life. I mean, it's almost like you had to have security guards there. One guy tried to get up out of the bleachers to go out on the floor twice. Eight, nine year olds, girls, right? And you're taking away from the girls, you're taking away from the athlete and trying to draw attention to yourself. It's, it's, I don't. We have to do something. And to me, it's an easy fix. When I coached, I was responsible for the girls that I coached and their parents.
Right.
If a parent got out of control, you're going to be, stop the game, go over, say, hey, you need to behave or you're going to have to leave. And we won't start playing until you leave. It's crazy. I've never seen it like that.
Well, I had a eight-year-old playing in Mighty Might's basketball, my granddaughter. And we laughed more than anything.
That's, that's the way it should be.
Absolutely. And, you know, even when the opposing team scored, everybody clapped. You know, it, it's, it was very refreshing to watch it. The referees, how they handled the kids. It's a, it's a very beginning stage of basketball for them, so they're learning. You know, they might take off the ball like it's a football for the first five steps and then, you know, got it down, got it down, you know. So they didn't, they didn't penalize them. They instructed them.
Right, exactly.
The children learned with great enthusiasm, you know, it, it was. And I know the higher the levels get, the more challenging they get.
Yeah.
Was that in Maryland you went?
No, here.
I was just wondering because they're kind of angry.
Oh, no. I told them I've never seen anybody other than Fort Hill act that way. But it's, it's bad. It was bad. And to me, that's, that's got to be stopped.
There's so many, so many regulations and, and so much allowable today in our society that, that didn't happen years ago. It's, it's, it's crazy.
I thought it was just me at first, but then I've seen another gentleman that was there on Saturday. At that game, I seen him Saturday night at a fundraiser. And he said he had to get up out of the bleachers and go stand in the corner because it was that bad. He, he said he just couldn't handle it. So, might want to say something to him about it's, it's put, put a blackout on us, that's for sure.
Well, then it puts a lot of undue pressure on the kids.
And the refs and everybody else. And the refs, you know, at that age, they're not going to be the best refs, you know, but they're, they're out there practically donating their time, you know, because it's not going to probably pay for the fuel to get there.
That's right. Yeah, so the doughboy is complete, the fencing, the lighting, the landscaping, that's all complete. And I've not yet had an opportunity to look at it at night, but it looks really, really nice. You know, I want to swing through there at night, take a look. The State Farm Pavilion at Warham Memorial Park is nearly complete. That was on the south end, up on the hill. That was an old pavilion made out of telephone poles, you know, many years ago.
By the tennis court?
Yes, sir. So that's a nice new metal pavilion there. It's very nice.
Didn't you have any others going in right now, Mattel? Did I have any orders?
No, that's, that should do it.
Okay, because I told Jack to try to piggyback one of the orders. Jack Lang. So you already taken, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think everything's been received.
That was like eighty-eight, wasn't that eighty-eight thousand or something?
Somewhere there about.
I think it escalated a little bit after there's something else. And that was the demo and everything, if I remember right.
Yeah, but that's, I think that's includes the concrete. Right now they're working, they're going to put a concrete apron around what they just poured. So that was, that's going to be a little additional money. They're currently working on a standardized, standardized pay plan for their employees, which I, I think is, you know, really a good idea. Especially if you don't, if you don't have the employees, you can't have the programs. If you don't have the lifeguards, you can't open the pool, so. Being able to raise their salaries like they did last year to be able to get folks to do that. But yet at the same time, establish a plan very similar to what we've done. That you're, you can start blocking in your employees that are not leaving, you know, every couple of months.
Kind of a step program?
Yes, sir. Be able to keep them, and then after our meeting, Bob, and they have a new operations person named Melvin. We went to Spring Mills and walked that property where the proposed park is going to be. It's a ten acre site. And just look and see the lay of the land, basically. And then we went to Inwood and walked that site so that they were familiar with what we're doing there, so. It was a good day.
I did have a fire board meeting that I didn't make it to, but I do know Baker Heights has an issue with the generator. I think that's the holdup right now. It's a, it's a gas generator. And I think they narrowed it down to where there's a piping issue. It's not putting out full capacity. So Hunter gave an alternative. You either fix the problem or you put a diesel generator in, which is a better generator anyway. So, or supposedly they'll, they'll last longer. So I know that's, that's something going on right now. And they put their checking deposits and stuff out the bid and they just got some response on that. They opened those up and just got to decide where they're going to go with the best deal on that one. Other than that, that's all I've got. Any board and commission vacancies? Bring in John Marshall, the third Penny for Ambulance Authority. Any activity on any appointments or anything on that? Interview that we had last week, the lady for Ambulance Authority. Tammy McDaniel. Do I want to y'all want to make a motion to put her on the Ambulance Authority in place of the late John Taylor, which her term would go for until February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four?
Second, yeah, second motion.
Have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone oppose?
Yeah, she was pretty well qualified.
Yeah, from the clinical side, yeah. That's something that we don't have right now. Counselperson issues, Mr. Delie.
So, we get to that. We have a, we've been talking about this for a while. About a, about extending the. Where am I at on the agenda?
Page thirty-two.
Yeah, so, so we've been talking about this for, oh man, over, I guess about a year and a half. About maybe two years hooking the Route Nine bike path up, coming down to the city. We started that conversation prior to, prior to the, the railroad, removing the rails. That's probably been two years ago, isn't it?
That conversation started with your idea, wasn't it?
Well.
It's been, I remember it was a conversation where we had this joint city, can they cancel it?
We, we talked about just bringing it down to Route Nine and then what, or Queen Street. And, and then Anthony actually sent a letter when we had a conversation about crossing over on there at the Recovery Resource Center, crossing over the rail that they were charging us for, sent a letter. And then within two weeks after they agreed to pay us back because of some mistake that they had made charging us, they started removing the rail. And so that started a whole nother conversation with the, with the city, back and forth. Last year in January, we had a meeting, a joint meeting with the city to start talking about how we could all work together to get this done and.
If I may, you have a bid opening at ten o'clock.
All right.
You think I'm, you think I'm.
He gave you thirty seconds.
Yeah. What took you so long?
You want me to finish or you want me to stop?
I want you to stop.
Okay.
You talk too much already. All right.
I'm trying to give you some background, you know, for for the audience to understand what's going on.
Anthony might need Talked to myself there for a couple of minutes. All right, we got a bid opening uh for physical year twenty twenty and twenty twenty one uh physical.
And these are for your general county uh and all the funds under your control.
So we did get bids this time, huh?
You did get bids. Alan's on vacation, but I promise you he's excited to just get his open. The first time he's been, so it's been advertised on the website and in the general ready for
How many bids did we get on this?
Just one, that's what you had. Well, first time, it's been out there.
Looks like you keep that night sharp, buddy.
It does, they're pretty sharp.
All right, number one bid, the only bid, Perry and Associates. Looks like the total bid was thirty two thousand seven fifty. And they're projected to take about six hundred fifty five hours. Thirty two, seven fifty for Perry Associates, which is Marietta High, it looks like is the main office.
And they've done the last four, probably five that I'm aware of.
You know, they have
What is it?
Oh, so it's close to the same price?
How many hours did you say?
Six hundred?
Six hundred fifty five, I think. Total wires. Planning supervision seventy two, field works four hundred seventy two, federal grants forty. Review sixty one and preparation ten.
That's for an audit. That's just to look at.
Yeah.
What what we've been doing for the last
It's not just money. I mean, they look at time sheets and I mean, it's
I get you.
It's
I get you.
All right.
You have three more minutes, man.
You want to take up three minutes or?
Three minutes, I I got three minutes worth.
All right.
Okay.
We'll cut you off and we'll we'll get to the next bid.
This is crazy. Jim Jim's kind of old down there. He might I might have to refresh him each time we start up. So so anyway, back back to what I was saying. So so in the meeting last year, we talked about creating some type of partnership with the city. So this was a meeting that was uh um I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting with the city. Um you were in it with me, right, Eddie?
Yes, sir.
And uh um discussed moving forward with that. The city offered up us to use their engineers that are on retainer with the city. They've designed the Frog Hollow path and it just makes sense to continue that same design all the way out um so as not to cause confusion with, you know, signs and and what we're doing so it all seems like one path.
Where's the Frog Hollow path in begin?
It's uh Burke Street. So Burke Street right at the uh Roundhouse. Um it it ends there. The the city is working on another plan um with C E C where it's going to take it from Burke Street all the way around the Roundhouse, all the way around through uh Aspen Hall and all the way out to uh um to Oatsdale Park.
And we'll go all the way out to S Rock.
So the connection from Route nine bike trail there to Rio Jail, how far?
Right down across the Towers Restaurant there.
Right, yeah. So the idea is the idea is that uh what what C E C's proposal is, is that they're going to work with uh um with with the uh jail, with the Department of Highways, with Royal Farms, with the um what's his name owns the owns the building there?
Brent Jackson.
Brent Jackson. And then get right aways along Route nine and all that. And then cut on to uh cut on to the uh um Ackles Way and come down. So the basis is an intergovernmental governmental agreement that uh would need to be signed and sent back to the city. And uh and a agreement with the um with that intergovernmental agreement for fifty seven thousand dollars to do all the design for that. But I'd like to make a motion to uh approve that so that we can sign and get going.
And can motion to enter into an agreement with the city, Mark Berg, for the extension of Route nine bike trail.
That was the motion.
And give the president
And give
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were still talking about it. You have a motion on four in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The Bush carries. Mr. Ryan, next on our agenda, we have a bid opening for R F P for police interceptors. How many how many are we looking for?
These, you you're looking for four.
Okay.
That the the specifications were reading written for pickup trucks and not S U Vs. Um you have two responses there, so we're anxious to see. You you approved three. Uh the fourth one is a replacement for a total twenty nineteen Durango. By the way, Chrysler Corporation is en route today to look at the action on on the computer that clock because the airbag
Ooh.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
That's not good. You said we have four?
It's no, it's for four vehicles, we have two.
Two beers, wrong. Um is from Whiteside of San I'm going to read that right. Ohio something. Carville.
We want lots of stuff from them.
Carville something.
Can't be bid.
No bid, can't meet specs.
It may not be available.
That's number one. Number two, no bid, unable to meet specifications.
Nice on the sentence.
That was that was
Are you sure that did that say? I didn't look at the cover. Did that say police interceptor on the front of that envelope? Make sure they didn't make a mistake and get on forward.
Law enforcement.
Yeah, that's right, once.
Yeah.
And what was the name of the company?
White side.
Whiteside, yeah.
Whiteside.
San, what is it, Dan? San what?
What's the address?
Yeah. Huh? Clareville? Yeah, that that was, there's two different parts to each bid. One of them is, right?
It should have been, I haven't seen them. I would expected have expected just one. We just it was just one, I don't know.
Well, then they must put two bids and say one.
May may mistake.
Well, this one here has bid number
Yeah, this is the same bid five enforcement. This is all this is just a double copy, original and a copy of the exact same thing.
Yeah, sure. But since bid number one, bid number two.
We banned that one there.
No, I put one there, but it says two, yeah, original and copy.
Oh, so you put one, okay.
Yeah, I got I got to put one on the first one.
I see.
You ever do this before?
You're confusing me, man. You write on envelope, not the paperwork.
No, you got to write on paperwork too. How you know which goes in the envelope? You know where you're at?
Yeah, you got me all flustered.
That's from Hagerstown.
It is. Hagerstown Ford, Hagerstown, Maryland. Bid for for four law enforcement uh black pickups, a hundred and fifty four thousand eighty dollars. Lump sum price for one law enforcement silver pickup truck, thirty eight thousand five twenty. Total bid of a hundred ninety two six.
We were concerned, we had some vendors say they couldn't get them, obviously some can, so that's a good move.
We got one that sent us the papers, said they couldn't, a bid.
Bid number two.
Number two. You can tell by the blue, number two on there.
All right, bid opening, uh R F P Engineering Inspection Vehicle, Mr. Ryan.
This vehicle, this is per your recommendation uh passing along all of the existing engineering white vehicles to the the deputy reserves and replacing the engineering vehicles with new ones. So it retires, it will retire six very old um deputy reserve vehicles.
So the sheriff and the deputy reserves are happy with that.
They are very much so. Appreciate it.
So we need to uh do we need to put those um declare those surplus?
No, so there's
We gonna wait till they retire?
Used to own them, even though the
Is your first day on the job or what? All right. All right, this is for seven compact S U Vs from Whiteside of St. Clairsville. Um a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty one thousand. These will last ten years.
Hundred sixty one thousand.
You forget already? Yeah, I did. Next one's from Keystone Ford in Chambersford, Pennsylvania. Well, I had to double check that. Hundred ninety seven thousand five oh five, one ninety seven five oh five. Next one, bid number three is Hagerstown Ford, Hagerstown, Maryland. One eighty seven seven oh five.
Hmm.
What was what what was that?
First one, probably. We had one, but they switched it in there.
This is the compact S U V.
Yeah.
Imagine, oh, they got all the all kind of brochures here.
Yeah, for the Ford escape. Four door, all wheel drive, is this all wheel drive?
Yeah, it actually meets specs.
It's a big difference in price, usually the other way around.
I noticed Ford's the eco, they have been pricing the eco sports, the escape, so they're bigger.
We're going to need to get
Chevrolet Trailblazer, twenty twenty three Trailblazer, all wheel drive, four door L S Summit weight.
Okay. So this, with that, we know they'll get two from where they're going. It might be a little more expensive.
No, that's what I say, it's unusual that they're less money. More dependent.
I didn't say prior to the opening, but those were all placed on website, all direct mail to the vendor list as well as on in publishing the job.
All right.
I was going to say, would somebody send you a text and remind you?
You missed that guy's, you get second string, man, I'm sorry. He would have said that we do have
Certification, publication.
He likes that. Never feel the shoes of the big man. Do your best.
That's right.
The next one
Is facilities truck. It's a half ton?
Mr. Governor, I asked the same. So we have four plow trucks with one spare, three quarters ton.
I mean, my wife's the only one drives a half ton pickup.
We have a half ton in the fleet. I mean, these are, these are basically Jack and Donald. Uh we have enough plows, they don't need them, they don't want plows. It makes sense to set down.
They're going for the comfort.
Maybe so.
The cushion you were at.
Maybe so. Uh in the beginning, when we designed the specs, I did a short bed, half ton extended cab. Uh Jack came back, they really have their heart set on the service bodies on the back of the trucks. Well, guess what? They don't fit on, they don't fit on a short frame, you have to have eight eight foot body frame. So we'll send out an addendum, so you probably will see two responses of each.
I'm surprised a service body will go on a half ton.
It does, they make them specifically for half tons, already made sure. Uh and then
Probably only have half the storage.
And but it's, they don't need much, right? They did see, however, the survey crew got back, they have the topper that lifts up off the bed and opens up. So both of them, maybe we end up keeping the bed on and buying that, but that's the purpose of that.
You know, the interesting thing is that you said your wife drives a half ton. And I see you're driving a vehicle that doesn't even know whether it's a truck or a car. So she's actually driving more of a truck than you are.
I call that the 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 latest later versions of the El Camino. And I think those ride nice, though.
Yeah, Dan, I came by his shop this morning and actually saw he was thinking about driving the Dolly out in the rain.
No, no, that 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 door is up because the cat was outside.
Yeah, yeah. That's just letting that garage breathe a little bit.
Yeah. All right, number one, Whitesville. Two twenty two and a half. They're twenty two and a half. I'm sorry, twenty two's half ton, did it right. Um and that is for eighty two thousand five thirty eight from Whiteside, St. Clairsville, West Virginia. This is just, that's it. Well, I guess I can open it up, find out what else might be in it. You say there might be some options?
It would should, we sent it to them asking for a second when they asked them the label. If they did, they may not have responded. We don't know, inventory is so tight, we don't even know that they were available.
Well, that to have the box on it, that's a or the utility bed, that's just a aftermarket thing, ain't it?
Yes, sir.
So you just get the chassis at that point.
But you can't buy a half ton just chassis, you'll buy a three quarter ton just chassis.
I think it's, and then it's six foot, or there were six foot, right? So these are supposed to be eight foot beds now.
Mad two. I didn't tell them not to send the six. I just sent them an addendum and asked where the eight, if they could, they please, we'll make it. It should be random, if they if it's attached to the spec, then it's just going to be the standard six.
Trucks per specification is also on the bid sheet.
That must mean they didn't send
They may not be able to get it.
Two half ton pickups. I noticed Jack, it'd be nice if Jack had power windows, so every time I pull up to him, he's got to get out of his vehicle.
That's the old three quarter ton food.
Six foot carver bed.
Tried to make that easy there for you, having difficulty.
All right. Okay, well, this is Whitesville again, so maybe this is
Probably the short
I wear a phone a bit there. Look there. Open it up. Oh, you missed the page.
Oh, I did miss the page, didn't I?
Yeah.
Thirty nine thousand nine eighty per vehicle, thirty seven nine thousand nine sixty for total two. Estimated a hundred and eighty days delivery.
Right at the top of the page right there.
Well, no, wait a second, I'm just looking, there's an attachment C. And that's what you're for the option, right?
Send email to them to just submit an option. They weren't specific and right, then. I did not modify attachment C.
Well, this one here is eight foot bed.
Correct.
Yeah, the other one you read was
Six foot bed.
Six foot bed. So they give you two separate beds, one for one, one for the other.
That's exactly what we asked.
I'm not so sure it wouldn't be better to fill with the eight foot or the three quarter cab chassis.
That's right. Mr. Governor, they don't need them, like
Well, the way I look at stuff like that is, it'd be like any other business, you hand them down after a few years. But whatever.
Keep moving.
Next one, Keystone Ford, Chambersford, P A. Next one. Keystone Ford, Chambersford, PA.
That's the one way you go up right there.
Twenty-twenty-two F-150, four-by-four, eight-foot bed, seventy-four one fifty.
Second one in there.
Alright, this is, uh, for twenty-two, half-ton, seventy-nine six thirty. Box, that's seventy-eight inches, so six-foot, six-and-a-half foot bed. So, the six-and-a-half foot bed's more expensive than eight-foot bed, see?
It's cam. The others are short cab long bed, the short, short bed double cam.
Because women like the short bed instead of the long.
She's wanting that truck back, by the way. I drive more than she does now. Hagerstown Ford, Hagerstown, Maryland. Price is seventy-four five thirty-two. Eight-foot, that was for the eight-foot. Seventy-four five thirty-two. Next one. Also from Hagerstown Ford. Seventy-nine eight oh six, seventy-nine eight oh six, and this is for. I would think a six.
It says right on the top of it.
Yep, six-and-a-half foot bed.
Six-and-a-half one in front of that. I don't know if there's a second one.
Camp Park Ford. Six-and-a-half foot bed, seventy-seven thousand five ninety-six, seventy-seven thousand nine, seventy-seven thousand five ninety-six, and from Chambersford, West Virginia. That concludes all the bidding. Is that right, Mr. Warner?
Yes, sir.
Alright, then I guess we'll, let's see what we have. I can't, what the? We gotta move our clock. I can't see it.
All right, we're back in session. First of all, I'd like to say we have Richard Dennis in our chambers here from Patrick Morrissey's office, our Attorney General, so it's always good to have you here, sir.
Thank you.
You don't have anything to address us with, right? Just here to enjoy the laughter, right?
That's it.
All right. Next on our agenda is Matthew Umstead, the Matthew Umstead, Director of Strategic Planning, Communications, 250th commemoration, celebration update, sir. That's quite a nice update.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I tried to put all the events there in the packet for the read ahead and also skip the table right away. There's a proclamation there, I hope, in the packet as well. I think Penny put that in for me and got that cleaned up. Our twin county, I just wanted to ask you all to adopt a proclamation recognizing Shenandoah County as for its 250th birthday. Basically, they're our twin county. It's a discovery of history that I've made this, over this period of time I've been working on this. Shenandoah County and Berkeley County were created by the same act of the original legislature, House of Burgesses. It was originally Dunmore County. Lord Dunmore is considered a villain in Revolutionary War history. And after the bill was passed creating Dunmore County, the county was renamed Shenandoah County. So we just want to send them this proclamation in the mail and congratulate them, just a little goodwill gesture to our friends down in the Shenandoah Valley. Just a thoughtful outreach. We're also doing outreach with Morgan County and Jefferson County as well as part of the commemoration because the original county was from the Keys Gap at Shenandoah and all the way to the Berkeley Springs Castle.
You mean Berkeley County, those counties was formed off of Berkeley County.
Right, correct. Yeah, the first 29 years, the first 29 years, 28 years, it spanned from the Berkeley Springs Castle all the way to Keys Gap.
And I worked at it at the library last week.
Right, and that was a great visit. I had a great visit with the President there at the library. And if you haven't gone down to see it, really, they did a nice job and they're adding new exhibits from, I don't know if you guys know Ronnie Good out of Hedgesville, but he has a whole house full of treasures and he's agreed to allow those to be on loan for an update of the artifacts that are in display cases there.
There's a timeline down there at the library would go down this wall, around that wall, and back up this wall from the start of Berkeley County and to where we are today. And it's crazy because we get blamed for the growth in Berkeley County, but there was a spurt that in, I can't remember what year, but I took a picture of it, that it grew faster than 21% in 10 years.
And maybe one of the first-
Probably around turn of century when the sackmills and all were-
Um, no.
No?
I don't think.
1980, I think, we were looking at 1980 to 2000, I think, comparing that to the current growth period, I think. We were doing some math.
Yeah.
And that's always dangerous for me.
I'm sorry, in 1980 to, yeah, 1980 to 2020 grew faster.
Right.
Is that right? Population growth, home growth, what grew faster, sir?
Um, all right, let me just read it to you. The population of Berkeley County was reported at 46,775 people.
When?
In 1980.
That's what, oh, is that right? I thought, I don't know why.
In 2000, it was 75,905.
So it almost essentially doubled almost, well, not quite.
By percentages, it grew faster, not by numbers.
Right.
By percentages.
And one of the boom times in the county really was in the 1700s. And, you know, when Davy Crockett rolled through the county in 1799, when he ran away from home after dropping out of school, he got in a fight with his dad and came to Berkeley County, Jarrettstown, worked for a farmer for 25 cents a day, plowing grain fields there in Jarrettstown. The county at that time had all kinds of little small towns popping up all over, Harper's Ferry to Berkeley Springs. They were all formed in that period of time. It was a booming time then as well.
Right.
In the very beginning, it was a booming county. It's a lot of history of booms, of population growth and industry growth all the way from the beginning to-
We was on Route 9 bike trail this weekend and I was trying to get the wife to divert over to the house down there just this side of Bardane, it's 1777, it's dated.
Right, yeah.
She wouldn't go, she wouldn't go into making help with me, I don't know why. Acted like she was scared.
Yeah, but we have a lot of exciting events planned. I really would welcome you all to take part in those in our duck, in the duck derby, where obviously all the proceeds, as we've discussed previously, are trying to generate a nice quality of life contribution for recreation and the community as a result of all the proceeds of the activities. One of the things that really I just want to bring to your attention briefly is the May 19th event, the actual 250th birthday, 250th anniversary of the first meeting of the county court, which falls on a Thursday. It'll be as part of your regular meeting.
We don't have to dress up in time to-
Only, only Mr. Barnhart.
Okay.
We would like Mr. Barnhart, where since he's not here, maybe you guys-
He had to go take a nap.
By majority, maybe you all can just vote on this now to have him read the account, the brief account of the first meeting of the county court that day. We want to unveil the seal of the county.
We could get, we could get Ms. Mock to do it.
Well, we could get the clerk of the court, we could, yeah, we could get-
She walked right in, just in time.
We could get the clerk of the court, we could volunteer Ms. Mock to read the minutes of the first meeting of the county court in 1772 of May 19. I just wanted to kind of feel you out as far as what you guys wanted to do for a little program that day, just to kind of get if you were interested at all in doing any kind of reception or anything like that. We don't have to make it glamorous or long or whatever, we can keep it very short and sweet. It just depends on what you all want to do.
Do you have the flask ready by then?
We're working diligently on that. Ms. Sine, the other, our other esteemed clerk, is working very diligently on getting a whiskey flask. I shouldn't say whiskey, should I? Anyway, it's too late now. But anyway, we had a, just for sake of background, 50 years ago, they had a commemorative whiskey flask 50 years ago for the 200th celebration, so there's a movement to develop a 250th flask. With no, no, well, that's all I'm going to say about that. But anyway, Ms. Sine, well, that's just talking about alcohol, this makes me a little nervous.
You don't have one in your pocket?
No, I don't. I don't, I'm not, no, I have not been consuming booze this morning, no. But anyway, no, and then, you know, there's also a commemorative, we have a commemorative pen that was delivered today or yesterday for the 250th and some other commemorative things that are going on as far as that goes. But just wanted to kind of get a flavor for what you all wanted to do or at least think about it. Let me know what your ideas are for the program on May 19th, because we want to have a nice reception. Maybe the senators or the representatives might be here to read some congratulatory remarks, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be a long program, but as far as action items though, I would request the adoption of the proclamation.
Do you have any old photos of the first meeting?
No, that would be pre, pre-photography. The first, of course, the first county prosecuting attorney was there and he also went on to speak in Congress, his name was Alexander White, he represented us in Congress in the first Congress. He was part of that, that meeting that day, as among many other people. But there's been a lot of really interesting history in Berkeley County. You guys should be, if you're a native, you should be proud to be from Berkeley County and if you live here, you should be proud to be living here. It's an awesome history. Do you have any questions about any of the events or anything that caught your eye?
I think it's pretty cool. Now, are you still planning that event for me and Mr. Mayor Kears to have, try to-
Mayor Knowles, yes.
I mean Mayor Knowles, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, you're good. We want, yeah, we would like to, we would like to have you guys enter the duck derby and the winner, I'm not sure about the loser, not sure. We haven't really sorted through exactly what we went there.
You've got to find your duck outfit, so the loser gets to wear that duck outfit-
The duck outfit?
All day.
Not all day.
All day.
The rest of the day.
If it's going to be something like that, it's going to be something physical. I've got to, I got to lose, I got to earn that right, not just watch a duck float down the river.
It's a point of discussion, we're having a meeting on the next week, hopefully with a little, the project, the duck project, and we'll bring that up and-
So you think just being accessible for photo ops, is that all?
No, I'm thinking more of a flintlock black powder competition or something.
As part of that event though, we're partnering up with a youth volunteer fair organizer who's bringing different organizations together to kind of offer young people opportunities to volunteer in the community and kind of open their eyes to what they can do to volunteer as part of the duck derby, so it's not all going to be about ducks, although we're also going to do some environment education stuff about the watershed and things like that. So hopefully it'll be educational on a couple of different levels with the duck derby. But there is some trophies we're going to hand out and some cash prizes, so the registrations for that though, again, all the proceeds go back to Parks and Rec Quality of Life.
True.
So it's really exciting and we're looking forward to, a lot of interest in the events, I think, so far, considering we haven't really advertised or promoted them a lot.
So the tree, the tree event is something we were talking about today, some planting of some trees, might, might be able to get interested in some of that.
Yeah, we're having a kickoff, you're welcome to come on April 11th, which is the day the bill passed creating Berkeley County 250 years ago. We're having a ceremonial tree planting at Adam Stephen House, which is the sheriff of, the first sheriff of the county, where he built a house on East John. We're planting a ceremonial tree there and encouraging people to plant a tree in their backyard, plant a tree at their business. In addition to the 250 trees we're planting across the county, all the schools, all the public schools, I should say, across the county are going to have tree plantings at each school campus in April, probably mostly in April. They're all lined up. We're hoping to memorialize those tree plantings with pictures and maybe some plaques will be put on the buildings eventually to remember what was done this year there. So that's pretty exciting. For the tree hugger in me, it's probably one of my most, I'm pretty thrilled about it. And the president had to send me, well, I won't spare him. He was telling me how he was outside enjoying the wild and wonderful this year, this week, and I was jealous. I love being outside. So anyway.
Alright, right now we need to adopt the proclamation to recognize, recognizing Shandor County, Virginia on its 250th birthday, the same as ours.
So move.
Have a motion on the floor. We have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Now, we might want to wait to get this signed, but we're-
We can wait. It can wait. It's nowhere to say. Yeah, we have some time.
Okay, well Matt, you all have been doing, the committee's been doing wonderful work, and I think everybody's excited, and it'd be nice to get this posted out there and everywhere. And maybe, I was thinking we should try to get some stuff on the radio or maybe the papers and stuff like that too, just not just social media.
Yeah, I've been, I've made a couple, I've spoken on the WPM twice about the different events and WRNR once. The Rotary has invited me to the noontime Rotary today. I've already gone to the Sunrise Rotary on Tuesday and the Chamber. So I've done a little bit of outreach. We could do more. You're absolutely right.
So here's a thought, here's a thought, sometimes I get these. How about doing a banner or a-
Hanging all over-
Every time there's an event downtown Martinsburg, you know, each, every time we have something going on, we hang up some type of banner.
I don't have to just hang it up and leave it?
Well, we hang, maybe we hang it up.
Right.
You got a little bit poor, you know anybody you can get that done?
You probably could do that, but, you know, if we have something that's at all of the events that you can show what the next event is and what's going on.
We have some banner deployment that we have a plan for at Hedgesville, James Robinson Technical Institute, the airport at Novak Drive and US 11. And we're trying to identify a spring mill site that would work. We've also reached out to the banks to try to get some display on their digital screens that they have.
If you get eight foot by 20, I have to measure, eight foot by 24 foot, you can put them out there on 81 where I got property.
Eight by 24, okay. Eight by 24.
You'll see them.
Okay, eight by 24. I can't remember the numbers. Okay, yeah, that would be-
I think that's what they are. Their regular billboard's on there.
But it would fit on, okay. Okay, well that, well, I'll take you up on that.
Ten by 24 is a regular billboard.
I think these, I'll have to measure them.
Oh, yes, we do, we do have a vision for putting up some banners, trying to get them up actually very soon.
Yeah, that would work really good.
And at the Parks and Rec meeting, you know, they, Jennifer advised that there were so far 140 runners for the color run.
Yeah. That, those color runs are something new in the 5K world. 5K is a really, they're very intense, there's folks that run 5Ks, but color runs have become a new kind of popular thing, and they're pretty well received. They're a lot of fun. We're going to throw blue and gold, or blue and yellow color at people as they run, and it'll stick to their shirt. It'll actually make their shirt, their white shirt that they'll have with the commemoration on it. It'll make their, it'll be like, kind of like a tie dye kind of effect.
Where you throw stuff at them.
You'll throw powder, cornstarch powder. It's hard for me to explain. No, I don't, I don't do these things. I go hide in the woods. So, you know, they throw the powder as they're running past these people that are throwing the powder, and it colors their shirt.
I've been, I went to, I went to Colors, I went to Colors Paintball one time, kind of did the same thing.
Right, right.
You're running, hit you with these colors. Hurt a little bit, but-
Right, with a little, yeah, a little pain there.
If I do paintball, I'm going to freeze mine.
You gotta be that guy, don't you?
Alright, Matt, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Well done, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. We do have a, we do have a rec card at the library.
Probably get them on 81 there.
We probably could distribute a few more.
Yeah, I mean, even at the events, we have the anniversary.
Right.
At one of the tables at the home show.
Right.
Somewhere.
With the timeline on it, yeah. The home show this weekend.
Yeah, with the St. Patty's Day thing, Jen Smith is hopefully helping with the project there and the home show as well, Glenn Hodgman with the cleanup project as well. He's, they're there as well. So there's networking going on, trying to get some outreach.
Matt, are you aware is Shandor County doing any type of activities?
They have a commemoration, presence online. I know of, I have not kept up to date with all of their projects. They've done some things online with some social media stuff. I haven't followed up in my review of what they're doing. I know that they are celebrating in some form.
Alright, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Alright, next on our agenda, we have a board and commission interview with Charles Bryan Smith, candidate for Building Code Appeals Board. Mr. Smith, how you doing today? Come on up to the, yes, you're right. Give me just one second. Just want to put on the record that we, on our financial audit, that we had seven people that responded by email saying that they would not respond to the bid, so. Could not, because we were too big for them probably, right? Okay, now, Mr. Smith, I'm sorry. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve other than me asking on the Building Code Appeals Board and your background and what your knowledge is, why you would be qualified, you know?
I don't know how much knowledge you have. Been building, plumbing, paving, anything to do with kind of outside.
Right.
Building, and I try to help the community a little bit, all possible, squeezing in with my busy days.
Well, they always say you want to get something done, you got to ask somebody who's busy, right?
Well, you got to do it.
Yeah.
You want to get it done.
Yeah.
I have no choice but to do it.
So you got a wide background in, in the building business and many years?
Yeah, 32 years I'm out here grudging through it, but hopefully building people's futures and memories.
Right.
Sometimes they're bad, not all good. I think that's part of the course.
Yeah, it is.
But if I can help, I would like to help.
Alright, well, we just have a few questions for you, and I know, I know a good bit about you, actually just in recent years. You know, I've always heard good things about Brian. So, Mr. Delie?
Well, I know Brian fairly well, known him for a good while, and I think he's a, I think he's a well-rounded guy, be able to, be able to add a lot of knowledge to, to that board, and, and he's, he's outspoken, so he's not going to just sit there and-
Won't hold anything back?
Yeah, I don't know, he's going to hold too much back.
Makes some people mad.
Huh?
It makes some people mad.
Some people don't want to hear, that's for sure, but no, I think, I'll, I'll say thanks for volunteering some of your time to help out. I don't think this board demands a lot of time, but it is important to have somebody there when it's needed. So I appreciate, I appreciate you coming forward and be willing to help us out.
I think this is, there is an appeal coming up. When is it, Anthony? Real soon?
They, I asked them if they wanted to have a hearing. The petitioner said, well, we agree to hold off.
Well, there's a, there's a possibility of one coming up in the very near future. Now, I mean that, I mean within a week or two, so I just-
But when's the last one?
That's the only one that I've known of in 10 and a half years.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen-
Eleven and a half years.
So you might not be too busy with it. We, and if you want to do something that you're a little busy, we can find another board for you.
I got one right here. I'm going, I'm going to pop that question. Go ahead, Mr. Gokadar.
Well, it sounds like you've got a pretty well-rounded background in the construction field, and you've been in business now for 32 years. You know how, you've seen how codes have changed, you know, and you've probably argued about some of them. You probably didn't think that every one of them were needed, and a lot of them maybe added more prices to the project or whatever. So that's where we find ourselves today, when we have, we have our section of code, and then we've got somebody over here that doesn't understand why they should be, have to do their thing. So that's, that conflict resolution, basically. And be able to find that common ground and educate the folks, and be able to just make a good, fair decision. And I think that's all anybody would ask, anybody sitting on that board, is to be fair, and that's, that's all I would ask.
Sounds reasonable. I always pride myself in being for a fair and, and very outspoken, so some people don't want to.
Yeah, that's good. Well, at least, you know, you're not sitting across from somebody wondering about what you're thinking.
Right.
You know, they know where you're coming from, and you're open and honest dialogue, you'll get things accomplished.
That's what we're hoping.
But thank you for applying. I'm hoping that, that we're working on getting this resolved.
From what I understand, there's not a whole lot of leeway for them on the appeal side. I mean, it's, it's pretty strong code violations, it looks like to me. But it's, I'll add some more conversation to our conversation here. We was down, myself and Jackie and my friend was like riding bikes in Harper's Ferry. And, you know, you're, you're there with a three rail railing, dropping off a 60-foot cliff into the Otomac River, but yet if we have a three-foot front porch, a porch that's three, more than three foot off the ground, it's got to have railing.
Two foot.
Two foot.
24 inches.
24, they changed it, huh?
No, it's been 24 the whole time. You've just been getting away with it.
I just jump higher than you.
24, yeah, three step.
Three step.
Yeah, three steps for steps. Right, three steps, because three steps is four risers and eight inches is the maximum, so that's 24 inches.
Yeah, but it's not about the port, the railing around the porch, I'm talking, you're talking.
No, it's still three steps.
Huh?
That's my rule of thumb.
Yeah, round the, round the porch.
Three steps, put rails.
Yeah.
Porch, steps, doesn't matter.
That's what-
If you're 24 inches, you're supposed to-
Us being in an escalator business, we just raised a grade.
I do that sometimes to get away from behind the rails.
Well, that, and plus, it just blocks your view when you're sitting on the porch.
You're right.
But, yeah, Brian, I've known you and, and, you know, it's, it's exactly like Dan said. The one thing about it is, and I like people like that, I'm, I'm sort of like, like that. You know, you tell people what they need to hear and not what they want to hear. Some people don't embrace that too much, but that's how, how we get things done very quickly. I've, I've enjoyed being around you the last several years, and, and it's always fun talking to you, and I think you'd be an asset to, to this board. Now, as Mr. Delie said, Todd Alter was in here last week, and so I asked him the same question. There is another board that hasn't met in 10 and a half years that we're trying to, 12, 11 and a half years, Gary, that we're trying to fill as well, Building Permit Advisory Committee. Would you be interested in sitting on that too?
I would take on it.
Hadn't met in 11 and a half years that I know of.
So you mean simplifying the process or?
We'll just put-
Adding to the process?
We'll just put you on both. You can figure it out. Is there any criteria on that one, Anthony? Do you know? Well, just think about, well, if so, let me, let us know. And like I said, they haven't met. Go down and talk to Brian Ross, see. I don't think they've met in 11 and a half years.
I'm just more about simplifying things for people.
Well, that's exactly right. That's what I said about the railing, you know? Federal government, state government, you know, you can fall off a 60-foot cliff.
And you're okay.
And, and it's okay, but you put up a retaining wall or a porch, it's all iron three-foot.
Right.
Or arc fault receptacles, we know how much of the pain butt that is.
The first step down outside of a door, now you got to have a landing, a three-foot landing.
Yeah, it's just, you know, the things that, and then they're talking about affordable housing, why, why there's not affordable housing, well, that's part of the reason.
Yeah, you can't build it anymore.
No, no, except for manufactured homes, they're exempt from all that stuff.
Right.
Which is the ones that need it the most.
For government projects.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's, and that's, that's interesting. I mean, that's why our stair regulations have been changed and altered over the years, just because of man, you know, manufactured housing and.
Well, the ingress and egress of windows, and Eddie, you would know this more than anything. I mean, if ingress and egress is, which is the opening of the windows, the functioning opening, nine times out of 10, the fireman goes through the window, the window's going to get knocked out.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Nine times out of 10?
Well-
What, what's the one time?
What I was going, he didn't break windows. I mean, you, you got your butt in trouble.
Is that right?
Is that right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, so, but today, they take them out, and I hate it. I hate to hear it.
Right. Alright, well, Brian, thank you for coming in, and this is one of the ones we need to take action on today, so, and we generally don't do that. We have to meditate and think about, you know, but I think you might be good to go today. So entertaining motion.
Look, the motion, we appoint Brian Smith to the-
To appoint? Is that what you said?
Yes, to appoint Brian Smith to the Building Code Appeal Board.
Have a motion on the floor. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, and you have to, Penny, he can go. You got to get, we'll have to get a letter ready and get that, and then you'll have to go down to Ms. Mauk, and she'll have to test it. You'll be good to go.
Sounds great. Want me to sit down and wait? Come back.
This is a form letter? Let's take a break real quick and go ahead and do it. Alright, let's take a break.
There you go.
Ms. Mauk's here, she can already test it. Ms. Malk's here, she can already attest it.
All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Board of Commissioners interview, James Keith, candidate for Burke County Public Service Stormwater Board. Good morning, Mr. Keith.
Good morning.
Well, tell us a little bit about yourself that we don't already know.
I'm here.
You're here.
Yeah.
And we, we, you know, you've been coming to the meeting for 10 years plus now.
Yeah, I've probably got as much time here as you do.
Yeah, might have more. All right, so tell us a little bit about, uh, why you want to serve on this, uh, the Stormwater Board and, um, what qualifies you to serve on that Stormwater Board?
Well, I'm just an average citizen. I have, uh, don't like the way it's set up, uh, pay, the pay schedule and everything. The law market's away with almost the same thing as we do, and I think it ought to be taken, uh, 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 more to the commercial people and let, and let the, the private citizen off a little bit, fair. They can, they, uh, can, uh, can.
Absorb? Is that the word you're looking for, absorb?
Yeah, they can absorb the cost better than the private citizen because I, I know I got a discount on mine, mine's $2.79 a month, but I don't think it should be over 50 cents or something like that with, with all this industrial, uh, people out here. They should be picking up. Cause I'm on, I'm on a fixed income.
That was on the original, uh, uh, plans, it's just it took a while to map all that, and I know, Mr. Wine, you've got that, that mapping's been done now, right?
It has.
So that, that was, that was kind of, that always was the plan to, to do it by the impervious area, um, and then also give credit because some of the people that you're talking about are, are, you know, a lot of people will talk about the big industrial places, they spend hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars on their, not only water quality, but water quantity. So they've already, they're already doing the first, within the first inch now.
Well, and I think the idea is to create a, a credit system that allows you to get credits for what you are doing, whether it is residential, I mean, uh, um, I know some of the systems allow, uh, some of the, some of the programs actually allow for, uh, rain barrels, um, on residential. Um, I don't think the city allows for that, but I think, uh, with their Stormwater Program, but, uh, but some do larger pieces of, uh, residential property. You can put little retention areas in just by creating a, a little berm in an area, um, to help solve and capture some of that runoff. And it's a great thing. I, I mean, it really is a good thing.
I like the rain garden myself.
Yeah.
Put a rain garden in, you catch a good amount of water. Get tricky, don't do the, so.
Yeah, I think, and, and I've looked at some of that, the rain gardens, i- in my opinion, I think what they need to do is we need to come up with some type of grant system for rain gardens because the green, the, the rain gardens are actually a very, very good tool to use. The problem is, um, if you look at the fee structure and you look at what it costs to put a rain garden in, you're probably better off just to pay the fee structure and not do the rain garden because of the cost of it. So I think you'd find more people doing the rain gardens and helping, um, purify the water that way, uh, if it wasn't so expensive to do. And, and of course, e- everything is expensive nowadays, that's for sure.
Got your questions or statements for Mr. Keith?
I appreciate you, uh, appreciate you putting your name out here and, and offering to volunteer and help.
I think, I think I can help the board as it goes along to see that everybody's treated equal and fair and everything. I'm, I'm fair. I, I am fair. I mean, I like to, I like to state my, my point here.
All right, Mr. Gokor.
You know, Jim, other, other than the fee structure that's currently set up, um, do you have any other knowledge about the MS4, how they, what they, what they do and how they operate?
Uh, you know, not that much, I just, I'd like to get involved or something, pick up these things and, 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 and what they do and how, come back to, how you come about doing what you do. There's a, uh, thing up there, these manure sprayers, uh, on the farms, I think one of the children, it's, 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 it's a big heavy rain, it's all, bro, shaw.
Okay.
I understand everything, but again, God.
All right, Jim, um, I don't have any other questions, but I'm like, everybody else, appreciate you applying for the, for the board, and I know you've given your time to Burke County and others, the Roundhouse Authority and others, so, uh, thank you for applying. All right. Next on our agenda is Tracy Gillis, uh, Grants Administrator, bid recommendation for yoga classes.
Um, this is a recommendation, um, to accept the price proposal for the weekly yoga classes for the Uniformed Law Enforcement, Emergency Management, 911 Dispatchers and Firefighters. Six sessions a week, three to be at the sheriff's office, department, and three to be at emergency management for $300 a week or $15,600 annual, two years ending September 30th, 2023. And the, um, uh, the owner instructor is Moving Mountains Yoga, Whitney Ingram from Shepherdstown, West Virginia.
All right, guarantee a motion on the bid recommendation.
I think motion to agree.
Second. Motion denied, second. Any discussion?
I, I, I do have a question. So if, if you said for uniform officers and then you said 911 officers, that doesn't, the, um, so, uniform officers, um, is separate, and then the 911 officers obviously aren't uniform, so all that is, kind of, it kind of rang together what you were saying, maybe you're just reading it too fast for me.
Um, it's Uniformed Law Enforcement, Emergency Management, and 911 Dispatchers and Firefighters.
So it sounds like the administrative staff of the sheriff's department doesn't qualify as uniform. That's, that's the main reason why.
Okay.
All right, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Uh, you have a resolution, uh, registration with the United State Department of Agriculture?
This is, um, basically to prove that it's the county council who is, um, asking for access to their grant portal so that we can be appraised of all their grants, um, for any of the broadband, fiber and et cetera.
Okay. entertain a motion.
A motion, uh, to accept a resolution for registration for USDA grant, or USDA, I'm sorry.
All right, have a motion on the floor. Have a second, second. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. In Victims of Crime Act, uh, grant application.
Um, prosecuting attorney and her staff is here to explain this more in detail, um, but we had applied last year, I didn't do the grant, Lindsay, um, the prosecutor's office did. Um, we didn't receive it, but we also know that they, um, funding has been cut. Um, however, I kind of, um, actually Elizabeth restructured it, we restructured it a little, and instead of, um, you have to have a 20% match, the total request for a victim's, another victim's advocate in their office totals $65,623. You need a 20% match, and that's where we kind of restructured it a little and put that as the match was our victim's advocate as the match for full salary in front, to try to make a little bit more leverage.
So was, what was that, what was the match again? I lost you.
It's a 20% match.
Right.
That you have to do, but in the restructure of the budget so that we were matching a victim's advocate for a victim's advocate instead of just 20%.
Right.
So you're using the existing one to use as match?
A little bit of a strategy, maybe to get it funded.
So it worked?
I don't know.
Well, we're applying.
Yes, we're applying.
Okay, okay. All right, Mrs. Delagetti, prosecuting attorney of Burke County. Tell us a little bit about what we're doing here, more detailed.
Uh, absolutely. Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you all about this. Essentially, what we're asking for is an additional victim's advocate that would be grant funded. We have one victim advocate position in our office, um, which was Lindsay, um, you're all familiar with, and she ended up going to work for the air guard. But we've since hired Cora Kowalski, who's here with me today, um, and she is, I guess she's been with us for 30 months, about three months now, um, and she had prior experience as victim's advocate, so she's been able to hit the ground running and, um, fill the large shoes that were left behind. But as you all know, um, our caseload continues to grow, um, victims that have, uh, crimes that have victims who need services continue to grow. We're getting another magistrate, so we have yet another, uh, docket that will require victim assistance. So, um, we're asking, uh, for another victim advocate through this grant application to assist Cora so that she doesn't have to be quite as many places as at once.
Okay. I know we're always interested in doing that because as you said, during the budget cycle, those are climbing.
Yes.
By the percentage, right?
Absolutely.
So, so can we get her to come up and give us a little scope on what, you know, what a daily, weekly, you know, involves? Not to put you on the spot or anything, but since, since I don't know how, how it operates in the prosecutor's office, I just wondered if we could get a little, a little scope on, you know, what, what you do on a daily or a weekly basis, or, you know, meetings, that type of thing.
So it, it can vary from day to day, week to week, depending on where court is, but generally, um, at the end of one week, I'll pull all the dockets for the following week, which will change all the time. Um, try to run through those, uh, on the Friday before, call all the victims on the upcoming week to alert them of the hearing, talk with them what some possible options might be, and then pass that on to the prosecutor on the case, um, to update them on where that victim's at and keeping them in the loop. If there's hearings up at survey court, I go over with the victim what that might look like, schedule meetings for, uh, the prosecutor and the victim to come together and kind of go over what might be going forward, uh, and just assisting that victim with any additional services.
Talk a little bit about what services you would assist victims, if they apply for or refer them to.
Mm-hmm. So I've actually just started a spreadsheet, so next year we can have some more concrete numbers for you guys, but, uh, getting them connected to the Eastern Panhandle Powerment Center, how we facilitate that referral, I then contact Katie Spriggs at Epic and let her know that referrals coming through, what services that victim might need.
What services that victim might need, such as therapy, additional advocacy support, whether it be family court. Also, the Crime Victims Compensation Fund. I will print out the application for that for the victim, any formal complaints that they might need. And sit down with them if they need to, go over what that application would look like so that they can turn a complaint into an application and hopefully get some of the money.
So would most of these be, what type of victims are we talking about?
Victims of crime such as larceny cases, sexual assaults, domestic batteries, destruction of property.
Okay.
Murder, yeah.
So pretty much any victim then, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
So it sounds to me, I mean, listen, listening to what you, so you're, you're, you're obviously the advocate, but you, you, you're capable of relaying the concerns and problems that are to the prosecutors that are handling the case than that individual may be able to do. So you're kind of that in-between person, right?
I can also break down for the victim, you know, work can be a pretty intimidating place to be and lots of big words for people. And I will break that down for them so they can more understand the terms. Sometimes victims need to hear things a couple of times to process it. A lot of times in murder cases, you know, big, high-profile cases, they need to take the time to sit and process it. And they might have calls and questions a couple of days later. I'd be their point of contact for that.
I get it. I could use somebody like that.
I could use somebody like that all the time.
Yes, we have the monthly N D I T meetings where other community agencies come together, will discuss crimes against children and where we are on that. Everybody's kind of on the same page meeting board.
And you told us previously that domestic violence is up higher than all the other crimes, it seems like?
Child abuse and neglect test, and those cases have risen an astonishing amount. And of course, as actually Cora pointed out when we were putting together numbers for the grant. Normally, I would say that cold weather is a crime deterrent, except in the case of domestic violence or child abuse because everybody's scripted inside. So yes, that is certainly, I would, I know that we put percentages together for the grant application, but on an average day, your magistrate court. In domestics. Oh, gosh. I want to say I had six or seven yesterday and five tonight, just looking at my spreadsheet. And so a lot of it is relaying concerns between the victim and the prosecutor, but also just sort of being the hand for them to hold. Because, you know, we're having to put together the case from the state's perspective and this is, she helps to make sure that the victim's perspective isn't forgotten. And also that their concerns are met because usually when we see people, we're seeing them because something terrible happened to them. And they're in public, we're here to serve them, we want to make sure that their needs are heard and they've got somebody there they can reach out to, when I might name another tribe.
So it'd be a little easier access. It's kind of like, I was thinking, it's kind of like going to the doctor's office, they come in, take your blood pressure and ask you if you have any questions, what, what's your symptoms and all that stuff, right? So that's, you're pretty much there. You're their go-to person almost.
That's exactly it.
And it sounds like you, it sounds like you have plenty to do, so I can understand.
Oh, yes. I have no boring days.
Yeah, I can understand the need for additional.
See, I always look at that as job security, you know?
There is.
If I do my job and I do it well, I mean, there's all kinds of work there for me, right?
It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate. And hopefully, it'll be a day that we won't beat you in that role.
If there comes a day that you guys don't need me, that would be an awesome day. So I would gladly take a step.
It would be across this whole country. Not just here, but across this whole country. But I'm pleased that we're trying to reach and assist those ones who have had the traumatic injuries during these type of crimes against them. So it's critically important that we do have that ability to help them and get them in the right direction of healing and becoming whole again.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you, Katie.
Katie, I got another question for you just before you leave. If, if, if somebody out there, if somebody wanted to invest, I always say invest, but donate funds to help these children that are, that are having the abuse and those type of things. Where would you say, where would you say from your interaction, where would, where would money be good to spend or donate to help, to help some of these abuse and domestic violence?
The Eastern Panhandle Empowerment Center, they have, in the last couple of years, recently expanded to be inclusive for services for men, women, and children. They actually have a safe house here in Martinsburg, but they're always looking for donations, whether it be monetary or supplies. They have specific rooms for victims of domestic violence where they can bring their kids so that they can have space with their children. Safe Haven and the Child Advocacy Center might also be a good place to check out, but the Eastern Panhandle Empowerment Center. I did see they actually listed recently, if anybody's doing spring cleaning and has bedding towels, things like that, they have rooms that they need to outfit for survivors, so.
So we are being televised and I thought it was a, since we are talking about that, I thought it was a great opportunity to at least put that out there so that, you know, people know that if they, if they do want to help with those situations, there's, there's an opportunity for them.
I appreciate that. Certainly, Epic is a great resource and I will never miss an opportunity to get a plug in for Safe Haven and the Children's Society, if they do anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the work. All right, need a motion to, for the grant application?
A motion that we move forward with the grant application with the, which does require a 20% match.
Actually, we're.
But we're using the current staff as that matching.
Second to that motion.
I have a motion for a second. Any discussion? Do you think it, okay, I was just going to say if it needed to be strengthened, we would be in a position to be able to strengthen the match or something.
Do you think, do you think that's the strongest way to approach it?
Looking at last year's, yes. That, that, doing a little strategy by saying, our victim advocate for.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. That's all you got for us today, right? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we have the wonderful Carrie Wine, Deputy County Administrator, to talk to us about broadband feasibility study. There's like 131 pages.
And Mr. Goguen and I read 131 of it.
Did you?
Yes, sir. My battery on my device was down to like 30%.
Well, I hope you don't go bald over that deal.
Well, it was interesting. It was interesting. There's a lot, I told Mr. Wine, there's a lot of it I don't understand, but it was interesting and great, great to move here if we can pull it up.
Yeah. So I'll tell you a little bit about it and how it came. Actually, Rachel Snively, when she was your employee, wrote the grant in the coding years. She was here and I probably didn't hear this, but I saw it run out. Region nine has been administering, it was a $50,000 grant for a feasibility study. That feasibility study included technical assessment, we did mailing, physical mailings to the people, we did online surveys. So this is kind of a summary of the state of broadband in Berkeley County to particularly to residents. There is some commercial influence there, but it's really driven to the people in Berkeley County. And we came up with about a 40,000 count number of home people that don't have access to.
Forty thousand people or homes?
People.
Okay.
People. That didn't have access to what is, what is considered to be broadband. At a bare minimum, 25 meg down, three meg up.
So underserved and not served.
Under and under, yes, sir. Under and unserved. That's exactly right. So Design Nine out of Shoot, Virginia, where, Virginia's heck is, Blacksburg.
All right.
Was the selected firm, it was a committee, we interviewed them, they looked at this stuff. And they came back with this wonderful, all-inclusive document that kind of tailors some opportunities for the council to address these un- and underserved people. The proposal that they have suggested is what is in the industry is called fixed wireless. So essentially, an antenna at your house to point it to an antenna on a tower and then you have broadband. All of the big federal money that's out there to support this one applied. Now, there's some strategies where we can use some grant money to build towers, but when you talk about broadband to homes, it, it isn't really embraced by, okay. They want to see fiber to the house is what the federal government wants to see. This is an opportunity where, moving forward, if we take this digest and come up with a strategy, we could essentially be providing broadband to these 40,000 people in a matter of 12 to 18 months. Fiber to home projects are five to 10 years, you know, three to five, five to seven. It's not overnight. So there's, there's other things and President Copenhagen, Alan Davis and myself met with Senator Capito. I talked about some potential pool money or seed money to get this started. There's some creative ideas. We could build these towers, we could create some leases for cell phones, we could use it for our public safety infrastructure. So it wouldn't necessarily be set this tower up, provide some broadband, five years from now, there's fiber to the home and you don't use it anymore. So I think there's awesome opportunity. I think there's some opportunity for return on your investment. But more importantly, I think we could step out and get broadband in the hands of 40,000 people in less than two years where it's going to be way down the road. I mean, they're, everybody is after this grant money. Even you have applied for a grant for a project in western Berkeley County. And as I understand it, we're, we're in the running for that money. But this is another opportunity for us to do something off quick.
So on the western side of Berkeley County, that's what this would be.
It's one of the places, yes, sir. Scrabbles are really under, unserved area, over, over in the Whitey's Neck and out there. There's lots of opportunity. The pockets are in that document, there's some, there's some J S graphs in there to show you where these pockets of people are.
So this would be basically a bridge.
It would be a bridge. And, you know, when you think about building a bridge, the last thing you'll do is when you're done with the bridge, it gets abandoned and deteriorates and whatever. Again, there's opportunities there for us to use it for multiple purposes. So I think further conversations would be, is that to our advantage and does it make sense from a budget perspective? This was just about presenting the summary and the report to the council, no actions needed, just take possession, there'll be a final payment to the vendor and that's it.
And you're saying this is more like a tower that we have at 911?
That's exactly right. You're 150 foot or less. In some areas, we don't even need that high. I think there's a, in some is 80 foot, right? Clear down, so.
See, he did read the 131 pages.
He did. So there's opportunity there for you to get assets. And you end up with long-term leases for the, for the sites for the towers. So that's all defined in the document. It clearly tells us, and they, one of the, the finals meetings that we had was, well, they'd love to provide the services. And we received, we got this, thank you for the book, we can get it done. We understand the concepts. You have people on your team that can, can make this happen. So the architectural engineering piece is moving forward. We can get that.
So, so we started this conversation, what is it, four years ago?
Yes, sir.
About four years ago, and governor's office sent a representative down here and we started that conversation, started moving forward and doing some of the things. And we, we entered into an agreement to allow a supplier to use our tower.
That's right.
At that point, from my understanding, they're pretty much maxed out of what they can do off of that. Is, is part of this plan, and I did not read the hundred and some pages, Eddie, so maybe I should ask Eddie, is there a plan to add another tower up on the mountain?
There's growth on the tower up there.
Okay, so we can add one to?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I said there's lots of parts of this I did not understand. You, you've got the expertise.
I'm just kidding.
And, and one of the things that you can ask President Copenhagen, one of the extremely unserved areas in Berkeley County was the art and hardware. I mean, this is beautiful occasionally, beautiful houses and great opportunities. And people are paying, you know, seven tickets for a home that didn't have broadband to it.
Right.
Your agreement with that company two, two and a half years ago instantly provided that entire road up and down broadband.
Right.
And a lot of happy customers.
Full view of that antenna.
Right. And there's a conversation. I mean, there's, you know, there's a reason why, you know, property values are less on the other side of the mountain. And this is, this is part of it, you know? There's, there's a reason why people want to be on the other side of the mountain so that they're not in the populated areas, don't have as much traffic, don't have. And, you know, unfortunately, there's, sometimes there's other things that go along with that thought process and this is part of it, that you don't have the same infrastructure as you have in the highly populated areas. But, but I agree in today's world with kids, you know, children being on tablets and the way schools are done and those type of things. It's, it's more of a vital piece of infrastructure than it was in the past.
Yeah, I, I live more like that and I had to invest in a hot cellular hotspot for my daughter to go to our last two years of high school because we don't have reliable.
And there were children being, you know, taken by their parents or grandparents to the elementary school in the evening to do their work because they did not have match services.
The HUD grant eligible census, it appears like most of that would be areas that would quite have more of the high-speed internet, if I'm not mistaken.
East of us, this isn't an issue.
Few pockets.
Parts of the east it is.
No, I mean, I mean, like Virginia, you know, I mean, those counties, Jefferson County still struggles with some of this. But, but once you get into Virginia, some of the southern, southern Maryland areas over in, towards the city, this isn't an issue in those areas. They have this.
It, we all know broadband is a super topic on everybody's plate right now. It doesn't matter what level you're at. I think for, for, for this body, the opportunity to bring it to the masses at a very fast pace, at a very efficient cost with, again, other opportunities for revenue. I, I think, I think if, if the council so chooses, just for a purpose of direction, we can get back together. There is a broadband committee that, that was formed. We can either use the Embar subset of that and, and come back and present formally to the council. Hey, for this amount of seed money, we can do this. There's already some budget numbers in there. I think the, the budget for full build out of this plan was almost $3 million. Didn't take it just at face value. We know that when you see a proposal this large, it's going to be on the high side, which we would want to expect. So just to set expectations, you know, for a $3 million investment, you could potentially service everybody who's on an underserved area.
Right now, the highest cell tower, it looks like in Berkeley County is 103.6 feet.
Off the mountain, probably. Then on the mountain, we have a 300.
Some of them down to 27.4 on the mountain.
We have a 300-foot tower on the mountain and 140-foot tower.
Yeah.
Yeah, but these are cell towers.
That cell tower, that cell tower in Wheatland, it's got to be higher than that.
I'm telling you, this chart says the tallest one, 103.6. That's in Marla.
Yeah, no, that, that.
Unless it's freestanding and not, I don't know. But I can tell you on public safety wise, on mount, on the mountain. So you have 120-foot tower at the highest point in Berkeley County that's equivalent to the tallest tower on the mountain that's 300 foot, so.
Other than ours. Ours at Central District, they have 140 and they have Berkeley County Round Top, 120, and Shandor Communications is 262. That's on the Eagle School Road.
That one, that one right beside the ambulance and Wheaton Commercial Center, that's got to be a couple hundred feet tall.
It's tall.
Yeah, it's a, it's a couple hundred feet tall.
I was at the top of the ambulance or Tuesday afternoon. I could see that.
Yeah, there's two of them there, right?
Yeah.
Side to side.
Small.
Yeah, yeah, a couple hundred feet. So would these towers, and you're talking about possible leases, those type of things, are these towers, are, are these towers going to be big and strong enough to be able to allow cellular rental space, that type of?
You would want, I mean, all depends on the budget.
Right, but I mean, it doesn't make sense. If you're going to do it, why not do it something that you're going to be able to get some revenue, be able to pay for the project and still supply the under and unserved in the community with the, with broadband? I would think that's the ideal situation, that then you're not putting it on the taxpayers, you put it on the, you know, cellular. you put it on the, you know, cellular.
That would be the best. So all that we're kind of asking, just the council, just an option, and if you want us to move forward with some ideas in the back, we're glad you will, but this was, we just, it's hot off the press and if anybody wants a printed copy, we got a FedEx shipment yesterday, about ten of them, so I can look it up as a paper. I did not print.
So is, is there tower locations already?
Suggested, there are suggestions.
Nothing appeared.
The next step, I mean, suggestions with the saturation analysis, this shows what can be covered. If the vision is there, the big lift, or folks like yourself could help us get landowners to talk and say, yeah, we will lease you X space for the next twenty years, right, it's finding those people who will need to talk to you. When you start talking about locking down a fence in the middle of a piece of pasture somewhere, that's, sometimes that's a hard sell. You folks know people much better than we do.
Well, it looks like a very good plan for fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand? Oh, yes, sir, very much so.
I mean, a lot of information here.
We did a, we all, we paid about nine thousand dollars for a direct mail to people because to get to some of the people without internet, right, we've thought it best, so we did do a direct mail, which they advised us, it was really real close to sixty, but the return, I think, is, the work product at the end is very good.
Yeah, online questionnaire really doesn't pop those people up, does it?
Rachel, you're, yeah, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I mean, we're, we talked about the gig ready applications that were submitted, we should hear about those.
You know the process, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the broadband plan was through Mero and rolled down to design nine, so again, that was focusing on wireless broadband, now the big focus is fiber to home, as Mr. Stating. As far as the gig ready, I think you guys agreed tentatively to match a million dollars to get it, good projects that implement through the technical assistance, we should hear about that in April and it's looking really good from the broadband office that technical assistance is going to be awarded, so that's just another, one another arm in the broadband arena that we have going out to fiber to the home in western Berkeley County.
Yeah.
Yeah, that project will change the design at great value in the next twenty years.
And I don't know if you knew, but Frontier did get awarded their final, the ARDOF.
Frontier got awarded what?
The Rural Development Opportunity Fund, the ARDOF auction, Frontier did get awarded all those census blocks from those areas that they bid on about two years ago. They have now about five years to get that real now.
Hope that works out better than last agreement.
We were, David Dina, my office, was talking to someone out in Charleston, who says that Frontier has put out fiber lines, it's expansion down in Charleston, and they're offering five hundred megabits per second at twenty dollars a month right now, so if they can do something, they truly can do it, fantastic, but again, it's five years down the road.
I get three meg for sixty dollars a month, so two hundred for five, I think they can do it.
So if we can do something senior than that ARDOF.
Right. Maybe that wasn't it, folks. All right, well, thank you, Rachel. The, yeah, I think this is a nice study for fifty grand. I think the direction would be to move forward and just try to move forward fairly fast because this is, but at the same time, it's something that we all get phone calls on probably more than anything, is not being able to have internet. Now, one of the things is this direct site, which means somebody, probably fifty to sixty percent of the people probably are going to have to put a tower on their property to get it.
Well, and you can put up a tower, a community can put up a tower and go off of that tower.
And that's defined in the plan and it gives some estimates, so it gives like a twelve, eighteen thousand dollar estimate for a subdivision repeated site, so you have the big tower that comes down into, let's just say, my subdivision and everybody feeds off it, so there's, and you would go to their HOAs and say, hey, look, here we are, if you want to invest for this, you're good, so.
So you're saying, are you saying that a subdivision like yourself would actually put a tower up and then run hardwire from there?
No, you wire this to the houses because you're closer.
Yeah, but being wooded, wooded property like that, you're still not going to be able to see.
It depends on the kind of wireless, you don't necessarily have to have complete unobstruction, so down in the nine hundred megahertz section, I have personally done projects, I go through pine tree thickets to get to the inside of the work, so it's not like you need an absolute clear unobstructed view. And that's where you get into where you start talking about grant money and the federal government, true broadband, talking about rural broadband, people that are un and underserved, if you can get them a solid twenty-five three, it's the greatest thing since sliced bread, right? So there are opportunities where you can get above the tree line, get a good signal in a subdivision where you may be traveling two or three hundred feet, where it's great, or even a thousand, even a couple, a thousand feet, and it was fine, all day long at those speeds. You're not going to get gigged, but you absolutely can serve your citizens.
And we've already talked about allocating funds from the state. All right, so I guess the direction is to keep exploring.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, you got any items from the public? All right, looks like we have a need for executive session for economic development. Anything else happening?
Yes.
And legal matters, okay. All right, need much to go to executive session for economic development and legal matters.
Don't move.
We are in executive session.
All right, we're out of the executive session. No action will be taken. Mr. Barnhart's not here. So which one of you?
Motion to recess.
We are recessed. I thought we were going to be in trouble there for a while.